The February 19th. Regular scheduled Board of Supervisors. We call this meeting to order. Judy?
Please join me.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this Board. When addressing the Board, please state your name for the record and address the Board as a whole through the Chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the Chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for a follow-up or schedule the matter on subsequent Board agendas.
Name is Jim Stilla, Hayford, California. I brought in here a paragraph out of the California Constitution which pertains to agency and assessment means a levy or charge upon real property by an agency for a special benefit conferred upon the real property. Assessment includes, but not limited to, special assessment, benefit assessment, and magnitude assessment, and special assessment tax. So I have this today.
Thank you, James. Any other public comment?
Good morning, Men, Chair, Supervisors, and Staff. John Brower from Junction City. I just want to once again urge Supervisors to please create a standing committee or an ad hoc committee or some means of steering this entire cannabis thing generally. Currently, it's nobody's job in the county to really guide this process. It's been erratic from the start. I think it benefited for years from having an ad hoc committee doing everything they did. Our county currently lacks a retail ordinance that would allow us to apply for grants for enforcement and other types of funding. We currently lack an equity ordinance that keeps us from applying for equity grants. State equity grants went up to the tune of $35 million last year to only five different counties. So this is a very important matter, and I urge you to take this up as soon as possible and continue moving things along, bringing maximum benefit to the county. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Good morning, Kate Graves from Lewiston. And though I am directing my comment to the Chair, this doesn't necessarily pertain to the Chair, I would just like to remind the Board and the departments and people that work for the people, AKA the government, that just because you've got away with things, and in this county you've gotten away with things for decades, doesn't mean it's always going to continue. And if people would like to go look at the number of sealed federal indictments that the federal government has going right now, there's approximately 24,800 just in California, which is twice as much as second place, which is Texas, and it's probably three times as much as the next state. So there are indictments for crimes that are sealed, and they're becoming unsealed. And if you follow the DOJ, you will see that they're unsealing cases on fraud from public corruption for election fraud, mostly for bundling and illegal use of taxpayer money for campaigns. But if you guys think that there isn't at least one in that 24,800 that has Tring County's name on it, then you're in for a surprise.
Hello, I'm Jennifer James from Hayford. I'm coming before you today to ask if you could look into matters of the animal control. I have livestock. I had neighbors that moved in, they're growers, they're from Bulgaria. They bought property next door. They have a lot of different workers that work for them. And on the other side, two and a half years of this, they also bought property, the property was bought, I'm on 20 acres. They have workers that have dogs that murder animals, and I have called animal control every time. I have lost a milking sheep. I've lost two milking goats, and my pig, and the animal control. On Saturday, I was helping someone move to Oregon, so I was gone. I am a teacher. My children called crying because their pit bull with their two German shepherds who hunt my animals daily. I had to move my animals off of our 15 acres and close to the house so we can watch them. I've lost, I had 120 chickens, now I have 32 chickens. So on Saturday, my children called crying, and speaking of our little miniature pig, who is like our dog, we love her, she was attacked and a volunteer fire fighter helped them rip the pit bull off of her. I did work at the hospital before I became a college teacher, so I do know how to do medical. I did grow up as a farm girl stitching wounds. But I was away from home. By the time I got home, it was late at night, and I fixed her up and patched her and everything. She's still alive. The animal control did not come out for two days. When they came out, they took the pig, I was gone, went back to moving the lady to Oregon, and now they won't give us back our pig. We're the ones getting in trouble for inhumane for our pig, which we weren't the ones that we've been calling every time. I have dead bodies all over. I started putting them next to the fence for her to look at because she won't do anything, and instead she's taking action against us. We're not in the wrong. We just want our animals not to be murdered anymore. And so if someone could take action to make sure that first the animal control does something. And Jennifer, could you please, Ms. James, put your name and how you'd like to be in contact? Dr. Coons, can you maybe come in and follow through with this?
What district?
We're on the way to Hayford. We're just past High Palm Road, I'm on the way to High Palm. So we're right out, right past the library. So we're right on the other end. So I'll have you follow up, please. Thank you, Senator.
I'd also like Sheriff to follow up with Dr. Coons. Sheriff?
Well, Board, if I could just handle this directly instead of going through that, I'll just handle it directly.
That's what I figured.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And if it's in District 5, I'd be more than happy to attend with you.
I'll follow up with you.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's a tough one.
Is there any more public comment? Mr. Everett?
Thank you all of you.
And I apologize.
Hi, Everett Harvey, Weaverville. It's been a little while since I've gotten up here, probably too lazy. I'm one of those people who learns things, I'm the last person to learn anything. You know, if there's a big rumor going on, I'm the last person to hear it. I think part of me being up here is I'm surprised because I'm hearing this rumor about the planning, not the planning department, the marijuana department, let's call it, or cannabis department, that there's been a mass exodus from there. And I'm wondering what this is about. I've yet to go talk to any of the people. But also, there seems to be a lack of transparency, either because I'm the last person to learn or nobody else knows that I'm the first person to learn, which I'm pretty sure isn't true. I would like to know what that's about. And sometimes what appears to be a lack of transparency is either it's on my part or it's something that's not really intentional. But if it were intentional, that sort of bothers me. So I would like to know what's going on with that. That's my question. I know you kind of can't answer right now, but that doesn't mean you can't answer.
Good morning. Thank you for all your service. I just had a question. I wanted to know about the paying out monies from the cannabis program. Is it going to, are they going to be using that money for specifically lawsuits? Is it going to be, are they going to pay all litigation that's concerned with cannabis? How do the funds that come in that we pay for licenses and whatnot? Or is it going to build other things such as schools? And I'd like to just have some more information on that. Thank you.
If you could put your name on there so I can give you a call. If you put your name and phone number on there, we can give you a call and discuss that.
My name's Pat McCaslin, and I'm from Hyon Palm.
Okay, on this paper, please, thank you.
How do you want to be contacted, whether phone or email? And just a reminder, because I see your button, this is a politically pre-zone, no voting stuff. I appreciate your enthusiasm there. Any more public comment before we move on?
Good morning. My name is Carla Avila, I'm from Hyon Palm. Esteemed Chairperson and members of the Board, I do appreciate you allowing us to give comment today. My daughter last week had a very momentous occasion where she, for the first time, addressed the Board, and she got very nervous. There's something about my daughter I know, though, is that she doesn't forget her lines. In fact, she knows everybody's lines in addition to her own. And she was very compelled to speak because she had something that she felt was very relevant to say. And granted, she's six, so she doesn't always understand all of the details about what's going on. But she really wanted to say that. Do you want me to say it for you? And this was her own words that she had asked to please be able to say, is that farmers who really follow the rules care about the earth. And my farm and I want to help the earth. That was her comment that she had really wanted to say to all of you. And unfortunately, she got a little scared. When I asked her what had, how, what made her feel that way, she said, "I'm afraid. What if I say this and it makes them turn against us?" Now, that really made me realize that we're still dealing with a serious epidemic of trust issues within our own community. We're too small of a community to not be able to trust each other, look each other in the eye, and be genuine about what we're saying and what our intentions are. It's going to be a long time before things normalize, but I think it's difficult to move on with our political discourse and make good progress if we're still hung up on our trust issues of the past. And the only way to move forward is to really rebuild our trust as a community. And so we urge you, the Board, to be excellent leaders in this particular matter. And we urge you to know that we know you're human and that you care. We appreciate that you're human. We'd like to see transparency for the sake of understanding, so that we can understand your vision and your reasons for why. And I think that's really critical regardless of where you're standing. Often, we're all in agreement as far as really what our principles and values are. And so we thank you for listening and for allowing all ages of people to practice democracy
Okay. Thank you for that public comment, and we're going to move on to presentations. This morning, we're going to receive a presentation from Amelia Lights with Trinity Resource Conservation District regarding the Trinity County Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
My name is Amelia Lights, and I'm from the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. I'm a project coordinator with them, and I'm here today to talk about the Trinity County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, what we've done so far and where we're going with it. So why is the Trinity County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, I'm going to refer to that as the CWPP going forward, but why is it important and how do we utilize it? So first of all, this is a document that started with its origins in the Trinity County Fire Safety Council in 2005 with this first rendition. Since then, we've had an update in 2010 and 2015, and now we're working on our 2020 update. This document helps bring millions of dollars to Trinity County through its utilization by the Trinity County Resource Conservation District, volunteer fire departments, the Watershed Research and Training Center, and many other local agencies. This also helps to support the efforts of our federal agencies such as the BLM and Forest Service to complete projects that the community deem as essentials. I'm here today with the support of CAL FIRE through their grant funding to complete this effort, and I'm very glad to have all of their support for this process. So thus far, I have worked to hold 12 community meetings across the county. At these meetings, we've discussed overall community preparedness, working to have the larger discussions of how each community is preparing for wildfire evacuations and all other emergency preparations. We have also looked to discuss the history of the CWPP in Trinity County and the Trinity Fire Safety Council. We've also looked at identifying what kinds of projects are going on through Trinity County as far as fuel reduction and also education programming. We've talked about defensible space on the home level. We've looked at shaded fuel breaks across the landscape and also strategic landscape thinning to prevent loss at our homes. Another mention is maintenance. We know that these projects can get done, but we need to look at maintaining these projects over time. Wildfire's not going to go away, and we want to be prepared for it to continue with return. So these community meetings ended with a mapping activity that I will talk about in a couple minutes. So overall, we had 119 members of the public participate at these 12 meetings and 42 members of the volunteer fire departments. What I've seen is that we've had a great turnout in Douglas City, Mad River, Trinity Center, Coffee Creek, and Sawyer, and you're going to see that that also relates to the number of projects that they identified at these meetings. So I want to thank every single one of those members for coming out and voicing their opinions for where they would like to see projects or programs implemented around their communities to protect us all. We also had a large participation from our local agencies. CAL FIRE and the Trinity County Office of Emergency Services were able to participate at every single one of our meetings, and I can't tell you how much that meant to the members of the public, the volunteer firefighters, and to myself to feel that support. So thank you very much for the participation. And we had the BLM and Forest Service participate in communities that were highly surrounded by their land and as they were available, as we all have large busy schedules. And I also want to thank Bobby Chadwick and Jeremy Mallow Brown for both attending and participating in the meetings in their communities. It was great to see them, and I know the public really enjoyed having their participation and seeing their presence at those meetings. So how did the mapping work and why does it matter? So every member of the public that attended these meetings was given the opportunity to identify where on the landscape they would like to see a project and what kind of project they would like to see. Through that, we were able to finalize the maps that shows each project identified with its own unique value and identifying what kind of project and what specific notes they would like to see. What we're going to see with this further, as I progress through this process, is that all of these projects will be compiled into a geographic information system that we hope to have available for the public, similar to the Trinity County Parcel Viewer. In total, there were 263 projects that were identified. Of the 12 meetings I was able to participate, I was also invited to go to Hyon Palm for their own community wildfire protection plan process. And they identified their own 11 projects focused in and around private lands while the Forest Service was conducting their own efforts on the federal lands. Today, we can see that Douglas City, who had the largest participation of public members, also had the largest number of projects identified. So I want to thank them for coming forward. Every single one of these projects will be reflected in the community wildfire protection plan as a disessential that this reflects our public's voice. Once all of these projects were identified, the participants in our public meetings were also welcome to prioritize projects for their communities. This will be part of the formula that we're looking at to prioritize all of the projects. We're looking not to just take into account the public, but also fire officials rankings of how they feel each project is important, but also look at the fuel loading, the recent fire history, and recent fuel reduction project efforts in this area as well. We have also put together a website which hosts all of this information and also goes on to talk about other projects going on in the area. We have, every single presentation from the community meetings is available there, which has maps of projects that are ongoing in the communities as well. On the website, there are also two models for Weaverville and Hayford. These models were conducted by Chair Huelo to show how a catastrophic fire may move through Weaverville and Hayford. I really ask that anybody interested in reviewing these, these are merely simulations, but you can see how in just an instance, our towns could be, have vital infrastructure loss. So our next step, so we are currently putting all of the projects into our geographic information system, and we're going to utilize that system to conduct some modeling, which is going to play into our prioritization of our projects. So we will work with the Trinity County Fire Safety Council and also the Fire Chiefs Association to put together how we want the model weighted, what is the most important values they feel to identify when these projects should be done and in what priority order. We're also going to look to update the wildland urban interface. So we've seen that in the last five years that we have increased our population in Trinity County, and we need to have the wildland urban interface reflect that. So we'll be doing some modeling to expand the wildland urban interface in certain areas, and it may contract in others depending on how our population movement has changed. We're also looking to work on our wildland urban interface with our federal agencies and CAL FIRE to help build the most, build one of the best WOOMY interfaces that we can for our county as far as implementation of fire suppression and preparedness as well as overall interaction with our grant funders to bring in money for these projects. We're also looking to hold a wildfire preparedness or awareness day, which will be on May 2nd. We're looking to have every emergency preparedness agency in the county that would like to participate. They're more than welcome to come. I'm intending to have different speakers throughout the day to come and talk about all of the different projects that we are currently going through, and there'll be agency officials available to talk about future projects. In the end, what we'll be looking at is all of this will go into one final document, which I will put out for public review. And even though we only had less than 1% of Trinity County's population participate in our meeting, I'm hoping that this public review will allow for more participation and continued participation in our fuel reduction efforts. Finally, that document will come to the Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association, the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, and to CAL FIRE for final sign-off and approval. So I hope that you are active and participating in our review process, and I'm happy to hear any concerns or questions you have as we go forward. I wanted to provide you with an example of our maps as we have thus far. So this is for Hyon Palm, in which we had 11 projects identified. The majority of the projects are looking at fuel breaks from Forest Service to private lands and also on evacuation routes. So these are proposed shaded fuel breaks and landscape thinning, the purple around those private lands, and then the yellow along their evacuation routes. So as there are six that have been identified as evacuation routes for ingress and ingress, we understand that there will be a priority as to which ones are most effective to implement first. With that, we have also identified which projects have been identified in the past in the 2010, 2005, or 2015 CWPP. We also see that this will be a factor in our prioritization process going forward. With that, do you have any questions or concerns? And thank you very much for having me here today.
So the May 2nd, have you, and thank you for your presentation. Do you know where that will be located yet?
The Holland Arts Center is currently reserved for that, and we'll be looking to see if we can implement any other events in other counties and other communities as well.
I know you put a lot of work into it, and I really want to say thank you and well done on your presentation. You did such a thorough job. I've asked Amelia to, and she has graciously said she would stick around to have any interaction from the audience. So if there's questions that you have, Amelia will be available for the public to speak to. Amelia, thank you very much. I know this is what every 10 years, you guys go out and update this. So if members of the public want to have, they weren't able to attend those meetings, how do they offer their input?
So they're welcome to call us and talk to us personally. Call the office of the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. We'll also be looking at implementing a survey, which will allow participants that weren't able to attend to identify areas that they would like to see. And then again, with the review of the document, that's a really great way if they have a project that wasn't identified, that's the perfect time to come forward.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent. Calendar, these items include routine, non-confrontational matters, and will be acted upon by the Board by one roll call motion. A member of the Board, staff, or public may request an item to pull and consider separately.
Yes, I would like to pull two points.
Public, do you have anything to pull?
Kate Graves, I'd like to pull 2.16.
Any other public? Seeing none, move back to the Board. Supervisor Ward?
Yes, Supervisor Brooks.
Aye.
Supervisor Dennis.
Aye.
Supervisor Chow. Aye. So item 2.3?
Yes, I will be cued off to side, Men and Chair.
Item 2.3, find no objection to the issuance of daily alcohol beverage license to ascend wilderness experience pursuant to alcohol beverages and charitable dance to be held at... and charitable dance to be held at CD Hall in Weaverville, California on March 28th, 2020. Any public comment? And move back to the board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 2.16, adopt a resolution which affirms the sale of tax defaulted properties subject to the tax collector's power of sale. Fiscal impact is dependent upon success.
Kay Graves from Lewiston, I would like to know if any of these default properties include code violation fees and fines in their assessment.
Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, please.
So, good morning, Terry McBurner, treasurer, tax collector. As part of the process, I have contacted county council and that I'm aware of, there are, I believe, are two properties so far and they're reviewing it. I know that the person that typically handled that before Joe through county council, he's no longer there and so they did pass that on to someone else and so that's what I've gotten back so far, is two parcels.
So, two parcels that are code enforcement?
That there have been issues and so through the title searches and such, and we'll be more aware of any issues pertaining to it. But I do try to reach out to the different departments and get information back. But so far, you have on this list, yes.
Because I realize this isn't, the auditor has given this information and is told and has put it on the assessment, but the county needs to make this crystal clear. And also, I've asked this before, that you show your jurisdiction and authority to enforce county code on private property, let alone take a fine, turn it into a tax and foreclose on people's property with that. That is utterly illegal and I hope someone takes you to task for it one day.
This is not pertaining to the code violation. Just to make that clear, this is not what this is about. I'm business for tax defaulted property. This is not in relation to the marijuana violation.
I'm not talking about marijuana, I'm talking about code enforcement and the fines and fees do go onto the assessment.
But what I'm speaking to specifically is-
So, I think what I would like to do is if you, Kay, if you could write down how you would like to be contacted and perhaps, this is going to take a while, I'd like to follow up with Terry with you with this.
Okay, I have an example of one of your ordinances that discusses.
It's-
This is just about the-
The items that I have are only for property tax, defaulted property tax. So, code violation is not in my realm, but it's not something that I am selling a property for, I'm not in real estate business.
Well, I'll read part of your ordinance to make it more clear. So, this comes from 8.68, 0.00-
Kay, is this on the tax on?
It has to do with assessments.
That's not this.
Can you, can you let me know how you want to-
If this has to do with assessments and default and foreclosure, which is what this is, right? This is foreclosed property.
This is not foreclosure due to code enforcement. This is for defaulted property taxes, that's what this is for, not for code enforcement. As part of a property search, I want to be aware of everything involved with the properties. So, the only reason that, because I do my due diligence to make sure what all is involved with those properties, that I'm aware that they have code violation, but this is not for code violation. These individuals have not paid their property taxes in over five years and that's why we're here today. So, this is not due to code violation.
Again, if you could just, I'd like to follow with this.
Well, and I will leave this here that shows that you do and have, and I would just want to make sure it didn't happen on this list, that you do take code enforcement violations, you do treat them as a tax, you do include them on the assessment and you do foreclose on people with that. So, all I was asking this time was, are there any properties that have that code enforcement attached to their assessment? So, the treasurer is answering no, I believe.
That is correct, we are not attaching code enforcement to the assessments.
Okay, well, I'll leave this for you, for your record, so you can see that the county has it in their ordinance to do so. And I'll leave my contact. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I mean, see them, bring them back to the board.
Sir.
Supervisor Dennis?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Bones?
Aye.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye.
So, we're going to recess for five minutes. Bringing it back. Reports and announcements, reports from department heads. I love it.
Good morning, Lady Garza, Director of Health and Human Services. This is my last director's report to the board. So, I just wanted to give you some updates with the agency. March 1st is my official time of day and just wanted to thank you. So, first of all, as you know, I had reported a while back that our landlord, that our HHS campus, you know, approved us to have an expansion of our buildings. So, his funding has been secured, so now we're just waiting for him to find it contracted. So, four plans have been developed and reviewed and now it's just a matter of time. Unfortunately, this took a lot longer than we had anticipated. Ideally, much when it was a project supposed to happen then and that kind of timed it that way, so when I left, everything had been done and unfortunately, it did not happen. So, I apologize for that, but as we all know, things do take some time. From the OES department area, I want to let the board know that we are receiving more information from the California Public Utilities Commission on implementing Emergency 211. We are working on the logistics and infrastructure. As you know, the state is paying for all of the funds to support the infrastructure. So, Ed Presley, our OES manager, will be providing you a presentation on that as he's been keeping well close in contact with him. As you know, and OES communication is always one of the biggest challenges we have in running an OES department. We are currently providing county employees, starting today, ham radio users group. That's something that has come up in our disaster council meetings, that was a need. And so, we have quite a few employees registered today to start the first phase, to become a licensed ham radio user. So, it's something that I really encourage staff to do, especially from our area in social services, because communication is just huge in our sheltering and communication for our families and children. In public health, I do want to let the board know that our public health officer, Dr. Herbert Al, was in the office yesterday and met with our public health staff just to kind of review the coronavirus situation. We, as an agency in public health, we get briefed daily from the State Department of Public Health and I just want to assure the board that staff are real, really in touch with information and receiving guidance on how we would want to respond to it if and when it does come to our area. So, of course, it's something we do not want to hold forward, but it's something we want to be prepared for. So, we are ensuring that staff are well prepared with information and implementation. Let's see here, from the social services side, you know, thank you for approving the housing coordinator position. We are awaiting for recruitment to start for that position. We do have some office space identified for this position in the HHS offices. We feel having that individual there would be a good one stop for services and information for those seeking housing assistance. Really want to thank Dr. Kuns and Suzie Pilkens for assisting us in pursuing the funding. You know, we are continually receiving more information on housing initiatives coming into the county. So, it's exciting that we will have some resources to continue to fund that position and other opportunities to support our county. In our child welfare department, I just wanted to give you an update on our family visiting center that's located at the Lava Park is being used and resulting in positive outcomes for families and children. You know, we had that location set up to provide a non-county office environment to reconnect or just to do family maintenance and it's really working out very well. It also supports our independent living program for our youth that are in foster care, so there's some cooking opportunities and just general living skills that they're provided. We do share that facility with HRN and other partners that support our children and families. We did just recently receive a $266,000 grant for something that's called Medi-Cal Navigation Outreach and that's going to be focusing on individuals that are released from jail. If they have any medical issues or needs, there's going to be some funding available to support them versus being referred into the county or the hospital. So, we are working with the state on implementing that and we are working with the general probation to certos inmates and those who qualify. In our adult services program, as you know, our population, there's a lot of elderly. We do have a steadily increase of referrals. We have very strong dedicated staff in our adult services program and I cannot praise them enough in the type of work that they do in serving our vulnerable. And that goes for our social workers and child welfare also. You have the most dedicated social workers in both adults and children that I cannot speak more highly, that they are just so dedicated. And last, it's for social services, I do want to let the board know that, you know, my position as director, I have been the board commissioner for the Partnership Health Plan of California. They are our managed care organization for our Medi-Cal participants. So, you will be receiving an item in the near future when a new director is appointed to replace the commissioner position. Again, I think I conveyed it before, having that role as a commissioner for that organization is just valuable. I really support what they do, they really support Trinity County. They understand our challenges being a small county and it's just been an honor working with such high credible medical professionals looking at what's best for us. So, I really, you know, approach you to continue to support them. Our veteran services officer, Jennifer Dawes, she is currently training in Shasta County with the VSO there and her staff. She will be attending an annual conference next week to start her certification, so that will be happening soon. She's had some, quite a bit of contact since she's been in the office, emails and phone calls, so she's been busy, she's in Shasta County, but it's been a pleasure having her. She is so dedicated and just anxious to get certified, to get some real service delivery to our veterans. So, it's really exciting to have her. From a budget perspective, I do want to let the board know that I am leaving the department on a budget that's on target. I know mid-year, the days are coming up soon. I do have to say, this particular year, fiscal year, I did take a conservative approach because I knew with the building expansion project, you know, it, as much as it's the landlord's financial cost, I still wanted to take this conservative approach because whether we needed additional furniture or administrative overhead, I wanted to make sure we were comfortable and had a cushion. So, I feel very confident with the staff that work in our fiscal unit, that we have a good understanding of our funding resources and funding streams. So, I think everything's going to be great. I do want to let the board know that on March 3rd, which is the next board meeting in March, there will be an item presented to you, which was an item that was an ongoing project for quite a while, even when I was the CFO. We have, you know, as you may know, we do collections for the participants who are in the general assistance program. These could be either over payments or they deceased and so, of course, we can all collect. So, that will be presented to you March 3rd. And just keep in mind, this is a collection going back to 1985. Took us that long to really verify the status of these accounts and just making sure the records were accurate. We did work with county council to ensure that the way we proceeded in identifying individuals was appropriate and so, again, I will be here for that March 3rd meeting, but I just, I did want to speak on behalf of it because I do feel it's my responsibility to cover that area. I did not want to leave the department with a huge collection balance that really should be, you know, approved to be removed due to their being deceased. Okay? Let's see. Last, I, again, leaving you, leaving the county and the HHS, I do want to commit to you that our agency has a very strong management team. I'm so proud of our leadership there. They're dedicated to all the families that we serve, but yet they're also dedicated to each other. The leaderships really care about their staff. We really encourage training, education and I just can't thank you enough for giving me the opportunity to take that role and being part of that leadership and the confidence that you gave me, especially when you gave me the role of OES director. That was, you know, an interesting experience, I have to say, but it was a great, excellent opportunity, especially since I didn't ask for it. But it's okay, it was an honor. Again, working with the sheriff's office and the Forest Service departments, it was an absolute honor working with such highly credible professionals. So, I do know, speaking with Shelley and the HR department yesterday, there will be some steps to move forward to having an interim director in my absence, so that will be happening later. So, I think I've covered everything. I went through my things on my to-do list just to kind of give you an update on things. So, I hope I didn't leave anything out, but if I did, feel free to contact me. I will have a county email through the end of February and-
The end of what?
February, February 8th. Will be my last county official day, but again, thank you. I noticed a lot, that there's a lot there.
Supervisor, there's- First of all, thank you for your years of service with us in the variety of capacity and really stepping up to the plate to take on OES. It was really a quick change and you did, and your staff did a great job. So, thank you very much. We will miss you and you've been a very solid rock for the county and departments on a variety of levels that face your department. I do have a couple of questions on the 211. If I remember correctly, it is also an informational line, right? So, not just for not, for non-emergency stuff, right?
The funding that the state is providing is only for Emergency 211 info only. We still have to set up the database, like, for example, if we had an incident, we would have to have information provided to them on, you know, who to contact, where the location is for the shelter, where to shelter animals, you know, that type of thing. So, there's some, you know, construction of information that will be developed, but it's just only for emergencies.
Okay. And the reason I asked is, you know, I was reminded this last few weeks, again, we are still, at least in the region, if not in the state, on a per capita basis, the oldest county in the state and for sure in the region. And looking at some senior issues these last couple of weeks, as with the Golden Age Center and some other issues. CSAC, we were discussing the state's master plan on aging and the state is recognizing the grain of the state, quite frankly, the grain of the country. So- So it seems in the discussions at the meetings I've heard is, where is this one-stop shop for seniors to get the information that might be of help to them before they get into a crisis mode and where they need APS? So is there money through, new money coming down as a result of this development of the age master plan for aging?
I do know that the governor has, you know, carved out some funds to increase funding for adult services staff in training, but not in infrastructure that I'm aware of. But they do, they do realize, in fact, I just received an email from CWDA, which is California Welfare Directors Association, that touched on the reevaluation of how adult services is structured. For example, you know, many counties, as such as ours, the public conservators and the DA's office, and then we have public conservators, which we do have that in our agency. Yeah, so there's, you know, there's just a reevaluation of how we're rolling out that support towards our adults. So I'm sure more information is going to come. And again, Michael Tony is very well versed, such a subject matter expert in adult services. So he should be willing to provide that to you.
Great. And once again, thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you, Judy, especially for your support and any time we've had to work together during the fire or whatever. You've been amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
This won't be the last time we see her because we've asked her to come back on Tuesday, March 17th, which is a Tuesday to us, it'll be a Saturday to her. To, for the proclamation, thanking her for her service and we can show these years again. And then also on the 3rd, I'll be coming back with a recommendation for interim director with the, asking the board's approval until we have her interview to stand and appoint a new director. So we'll do that on the 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're still at Department head reports if anybody wants to come on up.
Good morning. I wanted to just kind of touch base and kind of update you on a few things we have going on. We've had a fun filled, you know, year with the conversion for the new property tax system. We did kind of implement that in phases. And while we still, on the backside of things, are still working through some conversions with them, we are, we ahead of schedule what they have been in the past for other counties. I, one of the processes that we're doing is online. We had to, like, there was a lot of work behind the scenes with the different vendors that we had to work with. This person also. So we are now accepting e-checks. And so that was one of the things, like with moving forward with technology. We have not ever offered that in the past. And so there was a fee that the credit card company charged, but it wasn't something that we actually, the county can't afford that. It was too absorbent. But we would pass that fee on to the customer in order to use that service for convenience. And so now we do offer e-checks. And then one of the nice features that I'm really looking forward to, when we, we're in the testing portion, so hopefully this will be live shortly, where, so as soon as the payment's made online, it's immediately posted in our system. And so that's one of the, so as far as efficiency, that's something I'm really looking forward to. And then we also, I'm in the process now, once we've kind of got past our heavy season, as far as, we were also working on the new conversion for TOT. So there's a new process that we'll use. So that's also with the provider is due date based that we'll have worked out with them. So that's something that we're looking forward to. And I'm often asked to provide different data. And the system that we have now, it's, you know, kind of, it's outdated. Still not able to always provide some of the information without manually going through and doing, you know, certain things and searching it. So this will be something to actually generate more reports out of. So that's something we're, we're moving forward. So it's still a process that we're getting there. So the e-checks was a big thing that everybody was excited about.
Supervisor Morris has a question for us.
Yes, so have we implemented, implemented the Airbnb on collecting TOT taxes?
Yes, I have. This was probably, probably the second quarter now that we've been collecting taxes through Airbnb.
What about the other services?
It is. We are working on something through VRBO. And so they are technically, it's, the legislature, it's not quite up to speed with technology. And so they're not legally obligated. And so we're going voluntary collection agreement. And so we are, we do have something in the works with VRBO. And so far, so those are the two that are basically on board that are willing to do that.
So I'm going to follow up. If you're a person that's doing this through Airbnb, do you still have to sign up to our TOT service now? Or do?
You would. So that's part of our ordinance. So you would have to sign up with us in order to be, and we provide like a, an operator number and things like that. And so, but they will collect for you if the person books through, through them. And I almost forgot this part. So one of the exciting features, some of our out of the area folks that are, we have a lot of, we have a very high quantity of, you know, venues available other than just hotels, like there's a lot of vacation rentals and such. So one of the things that a lot of folks are interested in is being able to pay the TOT online. So that's something that will also be available. So that'll probably be the next phase that I go through.
Thank you. Supervisor Morris has a question.
Thank you. Speaking of taxes, have we or has the infrastructure come down to collect online sales tax? There was a pretty large legal case for local governments to collect online sales tax, which wasn't being collected before. So has that started or is that still?
That I'm aware of, I don't know that we are receiving anything just yet. I know that statewide, that there was something, that there was legislature that was passed that I know if you purchase something through, you know, Amazon now, now you'll see that they're collecting a tax. And so I don't know that any of that's coming back to us just yet. That I'm aware of, I know statewide, I believe they're getting it, but.
It will filter down.
That's what I'm assuming, we hope.
Okay.
So being optimistic.
Thank you. I saw a couple of people get up.
Good morning, board. Just a couple of quick things to set some light on, some positive things in the sheriff's office. A couple of weeks ago, Sergeant Mike Tridio and I were invited to go back to Washington DC to receive an award by HIDA, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, for our efforts with the Central Valley HIDA team 2019 for campaign against marijuana planting. So we went back there and took part in the award ceremony there. I don't have the award here because it's being passed around the other counties in California. And at some point in time, I told them I would like to bring it up here and share it with you. So when that happens, you'll see it. One positive note is Siskiyou County Sheriff John Lopey is on the board for HIDA for Central Valley now, as well as Fresno County Sheriff Margaret Minn. So I'm hoping that will help provide some additional funding for our efforts here in Trinity County as well as we move forward. The second thing I'd like to bring to your attention is we recently had the State 911 Emergency Communications Branch audit of our 911 system. And I'd like to report that we had a very, very good report done. In 2019, our dispatch center handled 5,349 emergency 911 calls. That's an average of 445 911 calls a month. And that's just for our little county right here. These are only the emergency 911 calls, not the non-emergency calls that come in. Now, the State 911 Emergency Branch has a minimum standard. And that being that 95% of the calls have to be answered within 15 seconds or less. Our report indicated that 100% of the calls were answered within 10 seconds. That's phenomenal. Because the evaluator said that she has never seen a communication center meet that standard. So I think our staff did an outstanding job. So I just wanted to let you know that we're perfect. Now, down that note, we answered all the calls in a wonderful time. We've had some problems with the system on transferring calls, but we're working on that.
Imagine what you could do with a new dispatch.
We're working on that. And I just shared with Terry that we're, we're pursuing an additional dispatch radio system. The initial bid was rather high. We're looking at an alternate system now that the bid looks like it's coming in much lower, which will be a big benefit to trying to find money for that.
So I look forward to answering the calls before they are made.
Absolutely.
Congratulations on the HIDA. Remember, HIDA is, will be dear to me, going back a few years. So prior to your administration, I was always told that money was falling apart. There was no money coming to your department and pretty much that HIDA was going away. So it's good to hear that it doesn't seem like that's the case, that you guys are still in business on the HIDA side.
Yes, in fact, I did make contact with a few, the new director for Central Valley. He's never been to Trinity County. I encouraged him to come up here. He has all my personal contact information and he's looking forward to coming up here this year.
But you don't see that that funding is going away?
I do not. In fact, Sheriff Lopey has indicated that the money is still coming to Central Valley.
And that's what the region was in?
Yes, that's the region that we're in.
All right. Thank you and congratulations. On another totally different note, congratulations. My husband woke up to you being in the headlines in a very positive way. And I want to recognize that. For those, would you like to share with the audience, for those who don't know?
For those of you in the audience who are like me and don't do Facebook, apparently I've been recognized as the first Asian-American sheriff in California that I didn't really know until the sheriff of San Francisco County said that he was the first Asian-American sheriff in California. And I didn't mean to embarrass him when I gave him a call Tuesday to let him know that he wasn't. USA Today had to retract their original story that they had printed and they were kind enough to interview me and put another story out. They did a very good job on the interview. I thought the story was very nice. And Paul Miyamoto and I are still good friends, so. But that was, it was nice. And truly, in the article, I pointed out that here in Trinity County, we did not consider race at all in the race for sheriff, in the race for sheriff. And it was, personally, it was not an issue. When I won the race, I just wanted to do the best I could for Trinity County. And that's just the way it was. Anyway, but thank you. And I do appreciate the recognition. And it's one more thing for Trinity County, another first.
Yeah, that's right. Congratulations.
Anything else?
Good for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, I saw you, there you are. He's undercover.
Good morning. I just want to let you know at the interim weights and measures conference in Riverside, California, I volunteered and was accepted to be on the National Conference of Weights and Measures Cannabis Committee. And we are charged with writing a guidance document for the rest of the nation's weights and measures officials. Now, we just knew what to guide them with. It'd be great. And it's also with the emphasis on safety. That and also let you know, my, the biologist Angela Blanchard has passed her deputy commissioner series. So she has her deputy sealer, her deputy commissioner. The next step is to get her commissioner and sealer papers, which will take a while. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, guidance would be great.
As you probably remember, last time I was on that meeting, I was in Washington DC as the president of CSAC, or not CSAC, CAC, getting the initial straight. I led a team of directors of Sametario and Riverside and Trinity County to meet with FHWA, Federal Lands and a bunch, our two senators and a bunch of members from the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee to talk about reauthorization, some things that are important to us. I learned in Washington that the more important you are, the more flags you have out in front of your office and the more wood you have around your door. So how funny is observation? Anyways, our topics did cover the CSAC agenda, which were approved by the Transportation Committee and Housing Administration. And I'll just go over them real quick for future, because there is another event going on. And this was kind of the precursor to talk to staff about the NACO event that's come up recently. But all the items that we talked about are things that we are supportive here in Trinity County. First of all, is we spent a lot of time talking about the picks of first policy, which is kind of switching from a building new freeways and new highways to fixing what we have. And in that, having those monies go to the local entities rather than to the large MPOs or RTPAs to make the decision what money do we give to the locals. We're kind of pushing that the locals know what the problems are, let them be the ones to make those decisions. And then another item that was big on our list was CEQA for NEPA. If you're familiar with environmental process, we have two of them in the state of California. And the Californian ones are more onerous. So we like to do just that rather than doing the federal one and the state one. We also pushed for Giermendi's bill, which is to extend the ER emergency relief deadline for projects from storm damage or fire damage from two years to six years. And that was very popular on the handles level and I'm not very happy about that. Then standardized ER and FEMA claims, if you deal with that. On-system roads are ER emergency relief, off-system are FEMA. And they are two completely separate processes. As a matter of fact, the FEMA process, the last time they sent an architect out to look at the roads. So it's, we're kind of pushing FHWA to get more involved with it. And then of course, keeping flapp, federal land tax of the program and the highway district improvement program. Again, I'm going back next week with Supervisor Morse on the representing CAC again. And this time I'll be tied up with NACE also, which is the National Engineers Association. So we're doing that. And I will, during that trip, I'll be ready to help Supervisor Morse with any questions or anything that she has on transportation. But I'm planning on being there through the point where they talk about FEMA coordination and then I'm departing right after that. One of the good things that we did have time to meet with Lamont's staff members. As a matter of fact, he actually held me back from the rest of the group to talk to me. And we ended up talking for about an hour. But we talked a lot about the, there's a desire to raise the federal lands transportation program, which is the federal side of monies that come into roads, not the local side. We would support that as long as it didn't come from the local side itself. Concern was that they would increase that dollar and say, well, we'll make it for it, take it from the local side. So we discouraged that from going on, but we did encourage that Forest Service road systems see more money. And then one, one nice thing was when I did meet with federal lands, I talked about some of the problems of tackling our 2017 storm damage projects. And they have offered, Central Lands has offered systems. So I'm going to ask them to help us on Canyon Creek and on Denny Road to tackle those projects. And we'll tackle the rest of them. But that would be, that's a very good thing for our department. Also, in my capacity as president, I met with the forest engineers for Region Five, which is the state of California, Hawaii and the Pacific Ocean. And while I was, after, I And while I was, after I was meeting with them, I did have a chance to spend some time with Regional Forestry Andy Moore, and we did talk about some of the importance of coronation between local agencies and the road systems and forest highways. So that was a very good discussion, and it was very nice to have some time with him and Tyrone Kelly from, formerly with Six Rivers, who is now the regional engineer. In closing, Canyon Creek Trailhead, we started getting calls about road post signs up there. And so I did talk to Joe Smiles, or Smells, the district ranger, and he says he's going out there next week to look at it. But I did want to say that any closures that are out there, that's on the forest highway part, not on the county road part. The county road end is about two miles short of the trailhead, and so they're responsible for that part that goes all the way to the trailhead.
Thank you for your work regarding the storm damage and moving that around and taking care of that. Thank you for being there.
Yeah, we should see a lot of construction this summer. Higham Pond Road, I know, is...
Just thanks for getting out there and getting us heard. Doing a great job.
Yeah, your connection with NACO and CSAC and CDAC is really...
Yeah, and it was, thank you. And it was, it was great because I had the opportunity to take a statewide program and put a Trinity County spin on that. So, you know, it was nice to be able to hear. And it did go, it did go unnoticed by the senators and members that a small county was leading a large state. So they understood that when we were speaking there, we were speaking with diversity of all, all the groups, suburban, urban, and rural. So they seemed to be more informed and encouraged to listen.
Yeah, and thank you for using your charm to get, get to be president of the CAC.
With and charmed.
With and charmed, and telling me to be president.
I wasn't hiding when they asked.
So safe travels for you and Supervisor Morrison. Thank you, that's very important. While we're together unscheduledly, those are important.
Okay, and I believe I did give CAO Coons the talking points for the meeting, so if you were interested, he does have those.
Any more department heads? Okay, report from County Minister, Dr. Coons.
Well, I received, the county received in the mail just the other day, a professional development academy for Supervisor Chadwick. This is a 12-week course we participate in, and they deal with the most pressing issues and develop frontline leadership to the full potential, they believe, that if our frontline leaders improve their skills, our teams become better. So from what I understand, she almost got a perfect score, she scored 100% on everything, but because of our internet, she missed one question on the very last because of time ran out of internet. So, but I would like to present this to her with everything that came along with it, there's a certificate, looks like there's some bumper stickers.
This was through NACO, and it was actually in the last publication, so this was a scholarship that paid over $1,000. It was a $1,500 course, and General Pow was one of the instructors on the vignette. So I would encourage the leadership at all levels to continue with the NACO education. It was, I found it not just helpful for the county, but on a personal level too. So, thank you. Did you have any...
No, I'm sorry. That's, I'll have to report, thank you.
Report from members of the Board of Supervisors?
I have no out-of-county travel.
Yes?
I didn't know which one to read. So I was in Sacramento last week, where I had a, as long as you can get meeting with Senator McGuire, but he is a little busy bee, so he's hard to nail down to the floor. So things we discussed, AB5, some of their movements to try to make AB5 a little more user-friendly, the ammunition bill, which has seemed to be a huge flop out there, and trying to get that where it can function a little bit. And then, we talked quite a while on cannabis. One of the big issues that I brought up that he wasn't aware of is the issue that our growers send their product off to distributors, and the monies never return for a long period of time, and months and months and months, and sometimes they don't return at all. So this is a big issue for Trinity County growers to have the distributors pay their debts in a timely manner. So this is an issue that he seemed to take pretty strong interest in, so we can get some movement forward on that. That was what I did.
Let's see, CSAC, normally I would have gone, I did it by phone, four-hour meeting, our board meeting, and as I mentioned earlier, we heard a lot from the master plan on aging. And of course, there's a lot of movement on homelessness. The largest population that is at risk of homelessness are people over 50, and that they're seen across the state. The master plan isn't dying on aging, but it is a big task they're taking on. We also heard from Chief of Staff to the governor, and of course, the update on the governor's budget as where it stands today, and some Farmer Workforce Modernization Act that they're looking at. And let's see, what else? I think that is the general topics that we discussed. Of course, here at home, Golden Age Center, everyone knew that there was some struggle the last couple of weeks. They have received some longstanding donations that they have typically received and hadn't in the timely manner, which kind of gave them a little bit of a shock in terms of their financials. But some of those did come in, they're kind of riding back the ship, and they've released an announcement, my understanding to the paper, oh, it is Wednesday, so maybe it is in the paper today, on their update on Golden Age Center. They intend to be fully back in business, my understanding, this March, and they do plan to reapply for the four-year contract with PSA Two. So PSA Two came and visited with us, CAO Coons, and of course, Mike Toney sat with us to really get down and dig to what was going on. So more fundraisers are being planned by them and a variety of volunteers. So at the moment, as you know, home delivery meals are still happening for the month of February, and they will continue through the rest of their contract year in June. So that is it. Thank you. We had our CAP meeting, and there was a, we changed some things and going forward. On the sixth, I met with Jim Stowell with John Jelsak, and John read over the concerns that Mr. Stowell has provided us, and through a series of analyzing what the concerns were, we came to the conclusion that he was actually infusing certain parts of the Constitution with other parts, and so we had to dissect the tax. And then he requested some proof that the measures in 2011 and 2016 were, ran correctly in the newspaper, so I have those. He's already left, so I won't be able to show those. And I want to thank the visitor setter, John Hamilton, for helping me in those historic ways to find those, and I appreciate that. He enjoyed the hour that he spent with Mr. Jelsak, and I want to say a great big thank you to John Jelsak for taking that much time and setting it aside, and really trying to get down to what he believes the problem is, which I'm sure will be different and ahead of things, but that was the most important one, I believe, that, I'm sorry, it's already gone, so he could hear that I discussed it, because that was very important to be able to say that we met. So that concludes mine. And report from the ad hoc committees on the federal lands legislation.
No report, Jeremy's been, has some personal issues that he's had to deal with, so we have not met.
Is there a passage on number 12?
Not to my knowledge, but I have not.
Okay. We will be moving on. County matters. These items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board of Forest Staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Is there any reason to switch orders?
To confuse me?
Okay, so we'll just go in order. Board of Supervisors, 4.1, appoint supervisors to represent the county on the following boards, commissions, committees, and task force: the Governor's Force, Management Tax Force, and Trinity County Fire Safety Council. No fiscal impact. So Supervisor Brown has vocalized that he would be willing to be on the Governor's Force Management Task Force, that he would be also willing, if someone else felt a desire to be in opposition. So keep them... Okay. I had mentioned to Supervisor Brown a while ago that as Chair of NCRP, and that we work with the Natural Resource Agency for the state, they have had me attend for over a year on this, and he's welcome to attend with me, usually it's by phone, because there was a lot of meetings, and this is how, you know, part of the reason we were able to get $4 million for the region through NCRP, which many of the folks, kind of an interesting web, how this has been developed with the new focus on wildfire. So I currently have been serving through the, and if there's anything to Trinity, I certainly would raise the issue. So I'm happy to continue to serve as with both hats. He's welcome to sit in on a call, or anybody else who wants to come aboard. Okay, I believe right now that there was a letter that he received. Keith, did you receive it as well?
I did, not, but I was right.
Okay, requesting attendance, at least in the beginning, by monthly and semi-monthly. So why don't we do this, since he's not here? Why don't, why don't you...
I haven't seen the letter.
Okay, why don't you and Jeremy have a conversation about it, and then we'll bring that back to us?
Yeah.
And that way, because it might be overlapping, but it might be right now a separate specific. So...
Because the chair just met with our ad hoc of NCRP, as I reported last board meeting in mid-January, so they see you long on, and they know people, but if they want people to attend in person, I hadn't heard that.
So why don't we just table it and to Teacher Dave, maybe the 17th?
Yeah.
And that would give you enough time to speak with Jeremy, Tina, if you don't mind.
Someone sent me that letter?
Yeah, I will. Okay. So the second part of, so the second part of it was also appointing someone on the Board for the Trinity County Fire Safety Council, and I've been attending for three years, and I would love to continue unless someone else wants to. That's where you get me. So that's, okay. And just so you know, many of the layers at the Fire Safety Council certainly move over to the collaborative, they bring a lot of that same information, so I get it on that hand level, so I'm happy for you to continue. Okay? So that's that, we get to move on. They say either they're set for teleconference. So item 4.2, County Council, 4.2, authorize the chairman to sign a letter in response to the cease and desist request, no fiscal impact.
So this is in responsively, you're all familiar with this issue actually, to a letter that was sent by Council for Trinity Journal alleging Brown Act violations. This is a precursor to a litigation on those particular alleged violations. The response of Margaret Long on February 13th was to inform Mr. Underwood, Council for Trinity Journal, that the board was going to bring back a letter for cease and desist, which is what the direction was, and so the cease and desist letter for, signature by Chairman Chadwick is attached to the actual board packet. So the board today is considering that letter.
Do you have any questions?
Any comments?
Amanda, could you just review, if you don't mind, the rules that supervisors have to follow when we go into a closed meeting, that we have to sign?
Sure, the policy is that there is a document that you sign promising to keep the contents of closed session confidential, and that's reflective of the actual law, which is that closed session items are not to be disclosed. If they are returned, then that can be subject to civil penalties as well as criminal misdemeanor penalties.
Wayne Agner, Trinity Journal. Don't really have much to say prior to whatever action we're going to take. I'm hoping you're going to take the right action, and I'd like to defer my time until after that, if possible.
It is not possible, you have three minutes. Comment, Amanda.
Okay. Well, we all know what the issue is. August 6th, 2019, in closed session, you guys took a vote to approve a lawsuit settlement. You authorized a check for $95,000 to be cut. Both of those happened, and according to the Brown Act, after a closed session in which you take a vote, that vote is to be made public, and not a, oh, we just did it. It's a by individual vote. And that's what we've been asking for for six months. That's what we're asking for in the cease and desist letter, and just hoping you guys are ready to do the right thing. Thank you.
This is a really troubling agenda item. The assumption that you did pass that vote in that August 6th meeting would assume that you are cowards to report out your vote. And I've seen every one of you take a stance on controversial issues and vote in public because that's what you felt was necessary, and you damn the consequences. And so I have no belief that that would be why you didn't report it out. The only other thing that makes sense is that you didn't have a vote on the final wording of this agreement. That's what Acting Counsel Prentice said. He said that the October 1st item where he brought the settlement agreement to have a vote was the vote to finalize the agreement. Pass it, ratify the signature, the agreement is on, and if you don't, the settlement is off. The facts of the matter that are on record is that the agreement is void and null. And so this attempt to try to force you to record the tally of a closed session vote, that I'm, you guys know what happened, we don't. I'm just going to assume that you didn't have the vote on the finalized version of the agreement. That's why you didn't... that, to me, is why they're going this route, is to try to verify that the agreement is still in place. Mr. Underwood's letter in the packet today, um, states that the fact that the board acted in closed session in August 6th of last year to authorize Chair Morris to sign the agreement and to direct staff to proceed, because consistent with the terms of that agreement, does not appear to be reasonably disputed. You had an October 1st agenda item to verify, to ratify the agreement, and you voted against it, but they think that that's not reasonably disputing that this agreement is valid. And so what I suggest is throw this item away. There was no, the agreement is void. There is no Brown Act violation. Why are we doing this? Counsel has given you a shovel to dig yourself deeper when you should be using a ladder to get the heck out of that hole. This is ridiculous.
Good day, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Once again, John Brower from Johnson City. It seems that to unwind this kind of tangled issue is important, and, uh, the county council and staff, whoever else thought it was necessary to agendize a, um, a public, uh, agenda item in a public hearing to, um, ratify, uh, this decision, um, was important enough to get on the agenda, um, at that time, and, um, it is kind of unclear exactly what got agreed on or what got voted on by the, by the supervisors and, uh, as far as the, uh, the terms of this settlement agreement. But the, to ratify this is, is important. It seems I could finalize, uh, this or, or not finalize it, and so I just Googled ratify, and here, it, it's a verb, and it is to sign or give formal consent to a treaty, contract, or agreement, making it officially valid. It seems, without being ratified, this may not be officially valid. It's a really important decision for our county to make, so I encourage you to please take whatever time is necessary to try to unwind this matter and do it in as public a way as possible. Thank you.
Again, I'm the last person to know, uh, but this sure looks like a problem with transparency for the lack of it. Uh, this thing you seem to want to put forth today, to me, reads a little bit like, um, I'm not going to do the bad thing, but I'm not admitting I ever did the bad thing, and I'll never do that bad thing again. Uh, it's sort of strange. The only thing that sort of rings is this fear factor that someone else mentioned, that you don't want to know what vote you made. Uh, it doesn't make sense to me that you just say, well, I'll never do this again, except for if I decide I want to do it again, which is the way this letter seems to read. Um, it's certainly true that you can divulge information. It's not a totally secret meeting. You report out some of it, but you don't report all of it, and, uh, it seems to me like just a very, very strange situation. Uh, I wish I could have been a fly on the wall, seeing what was going on, but then I would have been the first person to know. That's what would have happened.
Okay, bringing it back to you, please. I just have a clarification. I think that letter we brought back via final agreement back in October was taking that further step of approving it finally, um, versus direction given on a closed session, which is pretty much standard procedure when we give directions given. And like you pointed out, closed session is closed session, and, um, I think we had to address this in our grand jury report on closed session items, that they wanted us to divulge stuff, which is a misdemeanor.
It is. It's also a subject to civil penalties as well, if it's legal.
Okay, I, I have no further questions regarding the signing.
Thank you.
So I will move ahead with the motion to approve item 5.1 as presented. It's very specific.
Hold on a second.
Move to the second. Yes, please. Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Dudley?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chow?
Aye. Madam Chair, um, if I may, I forgot to ask the CIO a question during this time.
Is it recording time?
Yes. May I go back?
You feel it's important for the public to?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
So we had a, um, a presentation, um, a while back, and people wanted to ask questions after the presentation, and that's not been a policy of ours, but I have talked to Council on that subject, so I, I'm just requesting that the C, the CEO and the Council come together and give us a set policy recommendation on, on that, because I think it's an important enough decision for them to recommend, uh, recommend to the board that we change or make a standard or policy.
So you want to, um, uh, to have something in the governance manual specifically referring to, um, audience, uh, questions? So, um, one of the things that we have, I have discussed is when we have a presentation, and if I don't mind, may I use Amelia today, wonderful presentation, um, the questions from the audience are then directed to the board that doesn't have the answers, and then there's this beginning of this back and forth. Now, I, I think it would be wonderful to review it, and I, I believe that we should have a, um, a policy in the manual, but that's why I have asked Amelia to stick around today, and, um, referring back to the one day that we had the presentation, I think that we were speaking of. We actually had three presentations, and, uh, the present presenter went last, and then we took a 15-minute break. That way the audience could participate in full-on conversations with the presenter, and I had asked that ahead of time. So I would say I am in agreement with Supervisor Groves that we should have a policy, but I also think there should be, um, a healthy dialogue and also input from the, the community, whether written or not.
I, I just want to make sure that we are following the letter of the law in the, in the meetings, you know, of the law, and so I think it's important for them to take a look and revise this.
I'd be happy to discuss that with Council also, go one step further. I'll, um, again, Association, which is California Association of County Executives, I can send that out to see what the other 50 counties do regarding presentations, if they have public comments or not, and if they've had any issues with, or with not doing it, so we can bring back something to the board if we have to do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, are there any more concerns or comments? Okay, moving on, I will read item 5.1 in regards to, uh, closed session. 5.1, closed session, 54954.5, parentheses, at Conference for Labor Negotiations, TSA. Requested action, Government Code Selection, section 54954.5, parentheses, at the Conference for Labor Negotiation, County's designated representative, David Prentice, Sabrina Meyer, and Shelly Nelson. Any public comment? Public comment?
I don't think I can wait too much.
So we'll move into closed session. You're live.
Item 5.1, direction was given to staff closed session. Thank you.